Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting in order of City Council on this Monday, January the 7th at 7:07 PM. This very good call to roll, please.
I see Brown.
Here.
And Bob Powell.
Here.
Daniel.
Here.
Senator.
Here.
We have four of them.
Thank you. If you would please rise, we will begin tonight with a prayer from the Honorable Councilman Daniel Daniel. We'll catch you by surprise. Pledge, followed by Chief Will Dawson.
Our Heavenly Father, we thank you for another day of life that you blessed us with. We're thankful, Father, for the blessings of this great community in which we live. We pray, Father, tonight that as we govern, that we will do so in a good, in a way that is good for every citizen of this community. We pray, Father, for the men and women throughout this community in uniform, that you would protect them and watch over them, protect the men and women who wear this nation's uniform, that you might protect them and bring them home safely. Christ name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for being here. At this time, I would ask the councils to look at, if they haven't had a chance to already, ask for approval for the December the 10th council meeting. Make motion with approval with me in a second. Thank you. Make motion in a second.
Mr. Brown.
Yes.
How.
Yes.
Mr. Daniel.
Yes.
Senator.
Yes.
Dan.
Thank you. Time on your agenda for recognitions and acknowledgements. I want to acknowledge you're all here. We have been here tonight. Thank you for being here. And one of the recognition is Charlotte Berry, who has recently been appointed. Got a call from Mr. Mark Hayes himself. If you're familiar with Mr. Hayes, she was asked to serve as a member of the Arkansas Municipal League Ordinance Count, Board of Trustees, correct? So, kudos to Ms. Berry for that. Continue to get folks appointed to things in high places. So, proud of her for that. Many reports, especially in Boys' Girls' Club. Kenny's here. And I believe you have a written report from Mr. Sunday. Any questions or anything for him? No. Yes, sir. Don't speak. Absolutely.
I'll talk about the basketball out there.
Oh, you're excellent. I got you. Sure you are. I know you are. Thank you, Kenny. You putting your stripes on tonight?
Recurring my summer.
Ah, very good. Remember those days well. SRCA, because Lisa is not here, I don't think, but we have to believe, again, you have a report from her. I will tell you that we have a request, a urgent request from her to look at purchasing and taking care of a heating and air unit that's gone out over at the center. I'm referring to Mr. Hamby, I think, on the contract, not at this moment necessarily, but we've kind of looked into that, see what our obligations are and pay our back and take care of these. The quote she sent over was for $6,300 or something. I asked, we're going to have our people that do the heating and air service here to do it. Give us a quote, please. We'll be looking at that in the very near future. Parks Commission, Mr. Goldstein, do you have a written report? In fact, everybody's got that. Any questions from Mr. Goldstein?
Well, I was just wondering, walking trail lights, is that part of parks also, or no? It's local right here. Michael has us around. Is that walking trail where y'all's umbrella?
Yes.
We've been talking about getting lights out there. I'm just looking here at the, we've got a lake trail project awaiting some lights as well. I'm sure there's lots of lights to get put in before these.
Those are in the parking lot.
Huh?
Those are in the parking lot.
Parking lot.
The lakes and lake trail project, those are, those are solid in the parking lot.
Okay, good. All right, then.
The bases are already there, the concrete, right?
I don't guess. There'll be cops. I don't know about the, there'll be cops.
All right. I'm sorry. Would you mind, I can take you quick longer to text, but would you mind giving that away there all my desk, Mr. Park, Mr. Park. Thank you. Water Waste Water Commission, Mr. Gladwin's here. Do you want?
We did not have many in December, so there's nothing to report, but I am here to answer any questions regarding.
Any questions? Water Waste Water? Citizens Forum, I did not get the board. Mr. Cross, would you mind and see if anybody has signed up on the clipboard there?
I'm going to ask.
Sir?
I'm here for you.
I knew, I knew you had.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So, sir, would you come to the podium and state your name and address?
I would.
An alias.
My name is Dan Gladwin. I live at 141 Doorwood. I'm here to talk to you about the blasting ordinance, which is coming up for consideration later on your agenda. We looked at this briefly last month. Anyway, I started this in last May, coming to you guys and asking for some help with updating the blasting ordinance. And there is now a proposal. And I've made some notes and I passed them out to Charlotte, so you have them in your package. So, I'll just go over them real briefly. The first section of the proposed ordinance says that this will apply to all blasting activity, but it doesn't define what that is. So, if I get an M8 to blow up a stump in my backyard, do I have to have a permit? I don't know. It says that all blasting operations shall adhere to applicable federal and state regulations, but there's not even a footnote to say what those regulations are. So, you passing an ordinance, it says, you're going to follow the rules, but when are you going to tell them what to do? The next section says that local authorities shall mean the mayor or representative, including but not limited to member of the planning commission, I'm sorry, the planning department. Does that mean planning commission or city employee? Okay. It doesn't say. Later in ordinance, there is some authority given to planning commission members to intervene in a blasting situation where imminent danger is identified. But that's the only place there specifically noted in the proposed ordinance. Section three says that the city of Greenwood shall not have any liability. And any liability that occurs or problems that occurs are solely the responsibility of the blaster. But absent due diligence on your part to know what the responsibilities are under state or federal regulations, you can't really weigh that responsibility without knowing which way. Section four, in a situation where there's an imminent threat to life or property, the mayor or representative may issue an order to desist all blasting activity. Eminent threat is not defined. It doesn't matter if it's human life or animal life. Property is not defined. So, does that mean a foundation or a stone patio or a swing set? And who decides what's imminent? If an order is issued to desist, is there public hearing? How do you determine when the orders should be lifted? Who has a vote in that? None of that is spelled out in the ordinance. It leaves it up to interpretation, I suspect. Section five says blasting shall be allowed in the city limits of Greenwood, provided all federal and state rules and regulations and statutes are followed. But again, there's no reference to what those other rules or regulations might be. Notification of initial blasting must be given 30 days in advance to, by an individual or entity conducting the blasting, to all businesses, residents, utilities within 500 feet, major horizontally from the blast site. And a copy of the blasting schedule shall be provided to the planning department of the city of Greenwood. Planning department probably is going to be the city, the mayor's designate, but it doesn't say that specifically. So, that information should also be provided to the mayor. If the police department has a key authority to stop blasting, then they should have notice as well in this notice, didn't they? Notification for residents within that 500-foot area doesn't say what kind of notice is there. So, it suggests you do a return receipt or publish it in a newspaper or however you do legal notices. So, notice is more clearly defined. Section six. Section five, three, the permit holder shall maintain and present to the city at the time of issuance of such permit, a policy liability, ensuring the permit holder gets liability for personal injury or property damage arising out of the blasting operation, a minimum amount of $1 million per occurrence or otherwise mandated by state or federal law. I don't know what an occurrence is. Is that a permit? Is that a claim? I think it'd be helpful to identify, define what an occurrence is going to be, so we know where the liability list is, whatever. Among the, among the federal regulations that aren't listed but may apply, one is 30 CFR 715.19, and that's the tax further than your thing. It says that we shouldn't do any blasting, there shall be no blasting within 1,000 feet of any building, business, dwelling, school, church, hospital, nursing facility, without first having a pre-blasting survey or other appropriate investigation. There's nothing in our ordinance to address identifying what issues might be turned up, what structural problems. The pre-blast survey, if you'll, again, look at the attachments, talks about underground structures, pipelines, transmission lines. There's a laundry list of things to look at in terms of potential problems to identify before a blasting permit is issued. None of that's in our proposed ordinance. Section six says that blasting will be prohibited within 500 feet of any dwelling, structure, privately owned structure of residence or any public building, school, church, or commercial building, within 500 feet of the quarry site. So, let's, let's unpack that a couple of places. The quarry site, obviously, is lifted from the state blasting statute. Shawn Lynn is doing a development approximately ago, of course. What's the perimeter of his quarry site? If he were to do blasting, where do you start the mission? I mean, what's a quarry site in a, in a commercial development or a residential development? What's the perimeter? Section six says you can't blast within 500 feet of a structure. Section five says you have to give notice to the residents within 500 feet of the blasting site. So, section six prohibits the city to issue a permit for blasting within 500 feet of the people you just gave notice to. I'm guessing this has gotten past to some extent, but it's been seven months since we started this discussion. Again, 30 CFR 715.19 is a federal ordinance, federal regulation specific to the use of explosives and steps that should be taken. It calls for, with a public request, notice of the blasting to people or property owners within a half mile of the blasting site, not 500 feet. It calls for, if, if a citizen or property owner requests a pre-blasting survey that goes into a great deal of detail about the potential for damage to existing structures, again, transmission lines, pipelines, water wells, underground wells, while the preliminary assessment of the condition of those lines only has to be done on the surface. The federal regulations say specifically the space of attention needs to be given for those kinds of risks. In our neighborhood, there's a, there's a closed gas well that was pretty close to the anticipated site. All of that is off the market now. The property's for sale. They don't just have, sold the house and they're moving on. But this is on, and it may be up there or maybe somewhere else. The ordinance that you guys are going to consider shortly, I don't think is very well conceived in terms of it having considerations within itself, making reference to regulations that are cited in here. If you guys were passive, I suspect that, if, if liability would run out on a contractor or a contractor would bolt before he finished the job, that the city's going to bear responsibility or liability. I encourage you, please, to, to think about what you're going to do. Keep the citizens in mind when, when you guys are developing an ordinance. And if you have questions, I don't know the answers, but you have the, for those situations.
And if I couldn't speak to this, this started seven months ago. And if you recall, I've at least on three different occasions said, I recommend it not passing an ordinance, because you've already got federal and state laws that supersede what we can do. I spoke to the municipal league. They, attorney staff there said they thought it was a horrible idea. Lane Richmond is who I spoke to. He agreed with me that it was superseded by the federal regulations, the state regulations. And some of the points that he, that have been pointed out are the exact reason that we don't need to adopt this, an ordinance of this nature. Federal and state regulations are fluid. They're ever-changing. There's no way that I could possibly list every regulation that's out there that could be covered. One of the concerns I had and municipal league had is the, we've had discussions before. Some of the councils said, well, put something together for us to look at. And there was discussion of the 500 feet. Well, federal regs said 1,000 feet. You can't go less than what the federal government says. They established that they'd issue permits for that. And if we're trying to supersede the federal government, we can't do that, people. I put that in there because that was discussed. And I'm trying to put something together for you to look at. Although, I have great concerns about passing the legislation, because if one of these blasting companies comes in here and sues us for trying to regulate something we don't legally have difficulty to do, we're going to wish that. As far as the liability is concerned, we have court immunity. When we start regulating, accepting the state government regulations, we could possibly lose that court immunity. And that's part of section three. You know, there's differences that we don't make sure that they follow all these state and federal guidelines. The city would somehow be liable. And not unless we stick our neck out there by applying the regulations that violate the state and federal guidelines that are out there. I talked to Jerry Canfield at the city of Fort Smith that leaned about this. I listened to my phone for about an hour. Also, when we went to his office and reviewed some of his books, he actually drafted a majority of what I put in here back in 1974. And this was before a lot of federal regulations and state regulations were there. He indicated that if he was called upon to make any adjustments to it, he was going to recommend that's what the city of Fort Smith has on their book, just particularly being repealed. So, I didn't get much help there either. So, I tried to put something together. You know, the CFR regulations that are referred to, that's what the regulations are. You can't do that unless you go there and comply with those. State regulates quarries. They're not much more specific than that, that they regulate quarries. The verbiage that I utilize, is the same that Fort Smith utilized, and it comes straight from the quarry statute that Arkansas has. So, I understand and I get where this gentleman and the homeowners are coming from, but I think it's a slippery slope. I think we should let the federal government and state government deal with those issues. But you guys can take two bucks. If you tell me to do this, I think that'll be the best.
As far as regulating, you're suggesting, you know, what about requiring, is, I don't know, can we require a law, where if they went broke, connect the mess, we always go in there and clean it up?
That's part of what they have to do in order to receive their permits and so forth with the federal and the state.
Okay. So, the federal and state are coming in there cleaning it up?
They're, they're in charge of all of that. Yeah. If there's a problem, then they step in and they care about issues. We're not. Number one, we don't have authority to do it. Number two, we better hire explosive engineers to make sure that we're going to be able to comply with all these regulations that we've tried to implement. The insurance issue, somebody in the discussion had mentioned it's a good idea to have bonding or insurance. And actually, Fort Smith had was $1 million per occurrence. That's generally how liability insurance policies are written per occurrence. It's also defined what an occurrence is. So.
So, would we, we add a line to require that they get a permit and provide proof of insurance? That's really there?
Yeah. Well, my recommendation would be if you're going to do anything, keep it simple. And just say that you have to come in and notify the city that you're going to undertake the blasting activity and show whatever state and federal requirements you have and let us know when it's going to occur. But I think that's about the extent of this. And if they have the federal state permits, then they will have to meet all the state guidelines. So, there really no need to require a bond or proof of insurance or anything like that. That would just give us a heads up that, hey, you know, there used to be some blasting. So, when we have other citizens falling in, concerned about it, we will attach.
So, that would be?
I think that's fine.
Yeah. Just a notification. You don't, you don't even suggest that they have to purchase a permit?
No. And again, I think that's, that's what we're stepping our bounds is required additional permit fees, additional what they already have.
So, what if they don't provide us notification? If they could pass it, I mean, I like your suggestion. We just, we require them to provide us notification. What if they just don't?
I, I, I think that we send somebody out there, sell them how to stop until at such time as you can, and provide us the appropriate information that's required.
And they just say, you're not with that. Go away.
No, they, they have to. In an ordinance, it would say you have to provide us proof, your permit, your federal permit, your state permit. And once you provide us that, we can call and verify. X, Y, Z companies out here, they have this permit. Was this legit? That gives us the opportunity to do that.
We need to write that.
When, when Dan was talking and then Mr. Hamby said it again, my, my thought, as he was going through all of this, was these blasting companies, no doubt, have their own lawyers that are well-versed in what they can and can't do.
If you were all, one of my conversations was from Mike Carter at one time when this was discussed way back when. And at that time, he was over Stevens. And he just said, I'm just letting you know that if you pass anything along these lines and we decide to blast, we have no choice to do that. But wouldn't have litigation, you're going to have to qualify. And at that point, that was, maybe back when you were first hired in Harvard, so I remember everything that we discussed.
But, you know, I mean, I am certainly not qualified to read this and go through what Dan has looked at and determined one way or the other. And I figure they've got a lawyer that's going to be real version of it. They'll have us.
And I agree with you.
So, the very last comment on Mr. Gladwin's sheet here, might be one to take deep care of, or take note of. Maybe is that what you're suggesting? Maybe the ordinance should say no blasting, maybe connected to the city of Greenwood. So, I say no, so I recommend the person with 30 CFR.
Well, I already know you mean to reference that CFR number, because there are probably 50 others, 50 other CFR numbers that are out there, as well as possibly some federal statutory law, law of state statutory law.
So, I'm stood in there at the end of that one, you just?
Yes.
Talk about some regulation.
And then the, on a permit that will be issued, it'll have that. You can see that issued the permit and have the information and make a file, to verify that it's not something that's already printed on the computer.
And so.
And it states in here, they are required to give notice. And so, there's 1,000 feet that are not.
So, we should still repeal the existing ordinance, but maybe modify it just to say that, to keep it kind of concise and.
Definitely.
It's the sort of thing we, we know about if you're in the city.
That's what I would recommend. And I'm looking at Mr. Gladwell Smith, his judicial comments here, and then give them a little more thought. I just looked at this probably about 15 minutes before I came here tonight. And a lot of the stuff that he provided to me has been helpful and good information. So. That's all there.
I just want to make sure we have something on the books that doesn't allow just people to show up and start blasting. That's what started this whole thing in the first place. Once the men got out and something was to go down, I mean, evidently, Mr. Gladwin and all his guys didn't like something in the federal or state ordinance, so they wouldn't have come out and let us do something in the city one. So, I don't know what he didn't like in that ordinance or in the state and federal regulations, but something tripped everybody off.
Well, I'm like you. I think that it should be more restrictive. But that's where our state congress would rely, federal congress would legislate that.
Well, I understand we always like to run for lawyers, but I hate to talk by tail and just say, good luck, citizens, deal with the federal guy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's great to do that.
I mean, at least like Clint and Roger saying, something in there that says, we want to see the permit. I'd like to have a certain kind of notice, just so they can get their pitchforks and torches out, maybe go up there and, and, you know, rally the troops when they're trying to go out there and blow up stuff. But it'd be nice to have some kind of notice of 30 days or whatever. And for sure, we want to see their permits and all that stuff. Our name is the order. At least have something like that on the book, at least we're not just bringing everybody up the drive.
Okay.
But I don't know what kind of, I don't know what blasting, when, determine you're going to blast, if you even have 30 days to give a warning or a, you know, or a notice.
Whatever's required by the federal and state is what tells. We can't restrict that to a lesser company.
Yeah.
You can add to it like any other.
Well, we, we can require them to notice to show what they have.
We can require that they show us a permit.
Yes.
So, we can buy, so we can buy, we can be aware of what's happening to the elements. We can't really regulate what they're doing. That's already, they live with the state and federal. And I don't have an issue with the notice to homeowners. I'll have to do a little bit of studying to, I think the state and the federal are both different counterframes. One applies to quarrying in the state. There's a question there to whether the federal regulations supersede the state regulations. I don't know the answer to that one. And that's one of the things that Daniel and I discussed in our conversation. But I don't think we can go any less than what they provided in their regulations.
And sir, so, when this comes through, would it be planning or does it go to fire marshal?
I would go to where you directly go to. Your priority would be if you want to be notified. I couldn't go against the planning department, but if you would prefer to be the fire marshal.
A lot of explosion and fire. I'd just prefer to be the fire marshal.
Okay.
I just need.
Can you do both?
You can do both. You can do both, but.
One time we, seems like we talked about the planning department, I don't know if it was a specific ordinance, but we sort of left that open. We left that a little broad on purpose, that the planning department could be the director of the planning department or it could be the planning commission. You know, if he chose to take it before the, you know, whatever. I would want as many people here to have eyes on it as possible.
We'll try to communicate, we have to communicate around here.
So, it's, I get communication from all eight.
Okay, uh, thank you, Mr. Gladwell. I'm going to move on because we've got the agenda additions, we'll be right back on this subject here, which is, I've got to kind of start it on. Uh, we've done well the last couple of months with no agenda additions, so we're going to set up this evening a little bit, not too bad. I think we're scratching the finance resolution of ending, but okay, scratched that one off your agenda, which is, the number is number seven. Uh, I want to replace that one with declaring vacancy on council. And then.
What number is that?
It's listed in number seven. And then I need to also add the discussion of the city by health insurance after that.
That's number eight?
Technically, it's going to be nine because I jumped ahead of myself here. We need to add the ordinance to wait competitive bidding, the water department, I guess is number four, really, under new.
It would be number eight, we'll just prove it, that's.
Okay.
You know, because it's really confusing now.
If this is Charlotte, this is Derry World, definitely change number seven.
So, eight is ordinance pending, is that it?
I need, no, I need it at the beginning of the business.
Yes, right.
Right.
Adding a break there.
Adding a break there.
To the person, please.
Sorry, yes, this person. Very good, okay. Uh, so, moving into old business, uh, number one is determining people who replace ordinance. Number seven, erosion control regulations, agreed.
And I think we've been through this, well, I think last month when I was out building, there was, Mr. McDaniel had a suggestion about the planning commission of the council determining what is of the slide sweep. I visited with him briefly before the meeting, uh, indicated that I thought things were going to get very tedious there. The more people are going to determine that, um, the planning commission and the council are not only readily available to go out and look. That's what the planning department is for. If you're dissatisfied with what your planning department is doing or what they're finding, then you can address that in, in that event. So, I, I don't recommend making any change there, and I think it's Mr. McDaniel, I would like to, maybe you can see with him.
Yes, I agree.
I agree, yeah, I agree. Anything else, councilman?
I'd like to, I might motion to put this on for the third reading, say that, for now.
Okay, motion second.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Rick Daniel?
Yes.
Tim Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Dano?
Yes.
Tim Terry? An ordinance, repealing ordinance number zero seven, number seven, and ordinance number eighteen, that includes or regulating writing, drawing, and cutting or, or similar activities which alone or in combination may cause land spots flooding, degradation of water quality, reticent sedimentation, potential damage to utility lots, declaring emergency.
So, is it too, was this too late to go ahead and enforce this on a big dirt hole or water pond building on Denver Street that still doesn't have soil well control, civil fence, all that on it?
If you wanted back to emergency clause, it would go in, back, back to passage of publication.
Well, I was kind of going to jerk on that because we think, I know we're sure we have all those regulations already intact, but nothing's still been done down there.
I'd like motion to adopt emergency clause.
Second.
Motion is second to adopt emergency clause.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Tim Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Dano?
Yes.
We're going to discuss that one, planning department, over at the end of the day.
Yeah, absolutely, and I, and I was, oh, I don't think Mr. Bell's here in this, in the dream. I was formed with that, I was formed with Vincent Coro that I recently moved around.
Never there.
Uh, they were out there now for today. Uh, okay. Uh, number two ordinance, oh, we were. We talked about it over there.
On number two, I don't, I just want to clarify, you know, this, we have been dealing this for a long time, and I would like for it to continue through this process and, uh, I'll make some modifications. I would like to get with Mr. Gladwell, Amy, and, uh, visit with him a little bit and, uh, he seems to have quite a bit of knowledge here, and I'm willing to listen and to try to accommodate some of what he's saying here, if he gets some good ideas. Uh, so I'd like to put it on first reading by title only, so if we can keep this thing moving, we have a lot of, a lot of light.
I'd like to motion to put this on for first reading by title only.
Second.
And the motion is second, first reading title only.
Wes Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Tim Terry?
Yes.
unanimous? An ordinance repealing ordinance number zero, number one, providing standards for possession, storage, transporting, handling, and use of explosive material, establishing certain conditions relative to detonation of explosive material, declaring emergency and emergency.
I would just provide then a bit, uh, Charlie, you sent the email with this information. Uh, did you receive that by email from Mr. Gladwell?
He had delivered it and not scanned it yet.
Okay. Um, if you don't mind, Mr. Gladwell, if you would either give me an email address or telephone number, I will give you a call and also assign about half the agents to sit down and visit with you.
If, if I may, I'd like to bring another from our neighborhood because it's not just my issue there.
That's fine.
That's good.
Just don't try to take the picture.
Don't take the picture, I don't, I don't need to take it either, so we'll share.
Thank you, Mr. Witness protection.
We will, we will. All right, thank you. Uh, Waterways Water Commission, I mean, Mr. Rogers is here to speak on this, Highway seventy one corridor, we could be, it's third.
Waterways Water Commission, we'd like to recommend the third reading or by title only, the Highway seventy one corridor of the two fifty ordinance.
We've never had the attached map with this.
It was at the beginning of the, end out.
The annexation map?
Yes.
Along the side of roads.
Somebody said that was the annexation corridor.
Well, it's, it's similar. It's not exactly the same because we're providing water and sewer potentially through a corridor of, of property that's all already within the city limits. So, it can't be the exact same map, but that's modifications.
I don't have a map, I mean, that initial one apparently was not supposed to be with it, so, I mean, that's probably, so I didn't include it with it. So, they don't have a map.
I think it was, it wasn't, it wasn't the annexation.
All right, so what, what you're telling me was not included in your package at the beginning?
Yes, it was at the very beginning.
I think it was at the beginning, yes.
But I was confused then, it, it was or it was not in your package?
Well, I don't know about that guy, but I saw.
It was.
Okay.
But, yes.
Like three readings ago.
Right.
But I didn't.
I'm aware that I needed to bring the copy every time we read it, but I just assumed it was part of the package.
I guess what I'm wanting to clarify is we have a map that we agree upon that's going to be filed with this ordinance.
That's correct.
But I was asked.
And, and the legal descriptions associated with were attached as well. So, if we need to delay the third reading before we can get everybody on the same page, don't have a problem with that?
I mean, am I supposed to use that map, the original one or no?
The map that was provided with the ordinance was supposed to be provided to you guys in your package.
What do, what's one do with?
So, I'm not sure.
It says rather in section one that the attached here two is exhibited.
It was with the first.
It was on the first reading, she just didn't include it on the second.
Let's just say that, yeah.
And I'm, I'm comfortable with it.
It just showed along the Highway seventy one area, kind of shaped there.
Both sides of the highway plus of, um, Tinsbrer and Denver. See, that's, that's the difference between that and a potential annexation map is, is those areas of Tinsbrer and Denver may or may not be included in the city limits. But we still have water connection fees that we would impose in the way.
If you need me to go get that other map and distribute it to you.
I'm, I'm good.
But I was asked by some, or by the planning department not to use that map.
That, that map did not come from the planning department, so I'm not exactly sure why there was such an issue with that map. That map was provided to me at our request, um, from Bricksy. Now, he may have used portions of that to shortcut this process, but the map was very specific to.
If you want me to use that very map, I can go get it.
Yeah, I, I think that's okay to do, it's, Mr. Bell's not here, but I, the, the map, but, and I didn't realize it had been requested to be pulled necessarily, but the, it, there was some concern that the map would be confused with annexation because we're in the process of doing that and he didn't want that to be necessarily taken as the annexation map, but you're right, you got that from Jerry Schultz, correct?
No, I actually got it from.
I mean, Bricksy, that's one of them as well, so I would.
You want me to go get it?
I think so, I mean, yes, but Greg left, is he?
I don't know what he did, he just kind of.
I don't know what that was, if you don't mind, that way they got.
Yeah, we have to delay it.
You don't mind?
Okay.
Wait, you will recess or you want to move to the next thing?
Uh, hold on, take a little while time.
All right, so we can, uh, are you going to address the way with competitive bidding or Greg McDaniel? Greg is here for, to support the detail, but I can explain to you what, why the ordinance is there.
Why don't we go to that and walk it?
Okay. We budgeted for twenty nineteen, a replacement of our SCADA system. The SCADA system is what controls, um, via the phone or a laptop or an iPad or whatever device you want to use for us to be able to control the levels of the tanks, turn the pumps on, turn the pumps off, they all talk to each other. Uh, if, if Chief has a fire and he needs water because they drained or a significant, significant amount from the tank, he can make a phone call to Greg and Greg can turn those pumps on using his phone. That's all tied together with the SCADA system. Um, it's fairly old and it's been put together with, uh, Balemire, and last year, the gentleman that supported that product passed. Um, worked for James Ford, but he was our go-to person to kind of put it all together, so we're going to have to replace it. We budgeted it for twenty nineteen of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. It's very specific to our needs. There's not someone out there that can have a permit fee solution, so we're asking to wait the competitive bidding so that we can take the two, uh, companies that we've worked with in the past and worked with them on, uh, providing that product. Charlotte's been a little bit bigger on the things that just. So, that's purpose of the ordinance is to wait the competitive bidding.
Any.
I'll make a motion, we place that ordinance to wait the competitive bidding on its first reading by title only. On a hundred and fifty thousand dollar budget, but then we have to prove it.
That's correct.
It's not about, I'm not working money here, but I just work about waiting for better bidding on someone's hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Because it hasn't been approved or because it's waiting.
And that's why I'm wanting to wait for better bidding on.
I agree. Um, but the SCADA system is very specific to our unique needs and we don't feel that we could, um, have a competitor bidder come in and bid on that and put us in a situation where the, the system will not work or will not talk to all the different components.
This is, we basically kind of send the specs to the company and they spake it out and that's.
The, the big reason you don't want to bid it is because you have to get specifications, make sure you write down everything. If you miss something, you don't get it, you get the chief's bidder, you get whatever they've got. Tim has gone to try and true instrument supply, lived in my SCADA system with the water plant, ended the SCADA system with, with our current plant that they hear about about thirty years, and they're in hot springs. They probably are as cheap as anybody, but they're here, and it's always a guarantee. SCADA is not something you want to bid after the cheapest bid. And they're probably going to be as, as close as anybody else, uh, the point they've got, like I said, they still work on mine, the water plant. And they're already on the map, something.
Yes, well, you have, you have.
I, I say it named in the movie.
The motion is second, we know a clerk to call the road, so.
We'll keep discussing.
Yeah, yeah.
A lot of tubes right now, the SCADA system has, you know, it was run by a guy that passed about a year ago, and it's an older system and hardly anybody knows how to run it, and it's just all they can do, keep it going, and right now they're having to run the same by hand on Saturdays and Sundays every, every morning, it's kind of been running very long time, and they have to come out and run it by hand and, uh, they almost start to do that same way, and it's just because things are often different, because everything's just sort of kind of worked out. And it's twenty seven years already.
So, our people end up?
Yes, budgeted a hundred, we think that's going to be adequate, we actually think it's going to come in a little less.
A lot of things, certainly, when you talk about supervisory control, you know, uh, you want it to be, you know, you don't want the, your weakest link even going to be solid all the way through. Wherever the weakest link is, it's going to, you know, check out all the systems.
Well, we've got situations now where people are having to come in, you know, two to three o'clock in the morning and just check the tank and see what the level of tank does, because SCADA systems are, we can't continue to operate like that, it's got to be resolved. And that's, that's one of the reasons why we escalated the process to be done sooner rather than later.
How quick will this happen?
I, I, that's a temporary question, I got to ask him.
Sorry.
Soon. But that's what they do, they did it for years, they built half of this, actually, very well.
I was going to say, it happens everything, there's all the listings and.
It's, uh, no, just the water, just the water, it's the water towers and.
Okay.
But they all talk to each other, they can all communicate to each other.
I want to go ahead and call the road, I think you can be, uh, with that, council's okay with that. Uh, we have a motion in second.
Or order.
Sir.
And the order.
First reading title only. Councilman Brown?
Yes.
Councilman Powell?
Not spending a week.
No, I can't keep up, clearly like this.
Yes.
Councilman McDaniel?
Yes.
Councilman Tim Terry?
Yes.
Councilman Lancer?
Yes.
Ms. Nams? Please.
An ordinance waiting for competitive bidding for purchase, we couldn't have a night for a eleven percent of declaring emergency for other purposes.
Get paid for it.
Make a motion. Make a motion. We spin the rules. Wait the second, third reading.
Second.
Motion in the second. Spin the rules and which is the word in the first?
Waive, wait, wait the second, third reading. Sorry.
All right, so the shaking area-
Yeah, I can pull it inside.
Sorry.
Do the rules again.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
McDaniel?
Yeah.
Tenary?
Yes.
Lister?
Yes.
I'll make a motion. We adopt the ordinance.
Second.
And motion second to adopt.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
McDaniel?
Yes.
Tenary?
Yes.
Ms. Nams?
Motion to enact purchase clause.
Second.
Motion second to enact emergency clause.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
McDaniel?
Yes.
Tenary?
Yes.
Lister?
Yes.
All right, fire my- Thank you. Yes, sir.
All right, so you do have a map in front of you now, and that is what the ordinance supports. Although I think I've told you guys many times that we're only in phase one, which is from basically Tinsper to Denver. It's going to be the phase one of activities, which we should have those engineering on the 26th of January at the commission meeting. But if you'll remember, when I first started down this path of an ordinance to recoup fees, the council requested that it be consistent with annexation so that we didn't have to come back and do that again. So that's why this map looks like the annexation map. It's not exactly the annexation map, but it looks like the annexation map. So there are 300-foot setbacks in a couple of places. I was advised that those setbacks are 150 feet, so you can see a couple of gaps, and this clip that represents is 150 feet setback is good luck. 300-foot setback.
Steve, the phase one from Tinsper to Denver, is that just the seventy-one corridor or is that that piece on Spur and Denver as well?
Rephrase that question.
The, you said phase one was from Tinsper to Denver?
Correct.
Is that just the seventy-one corridor?
Yes.
There's these pieces down Spur and Denver.
It's just on the east side, Highway seventy-one from Denver. Actually, it's going to tie in there at Walmart, but we're calling it from Tinsper down to Denver.
Just the east side?
Just the east side. That's the phase one. When we get to phase two, which will probably turn east toward Denver, we have water rights issues we got to work out. Currently, there is no water right issue on the east side of seventy-one. James Ford does not have a line in the ground on the east side of seventy-one through that area, so we're not anticipating any issues along that for a water right. They do on the west side, but not east side.
You say water rights. What are you talking about?
James Ford.
Okay.
In the phase one of the east side of seventy-one.
Yeah, the engineering schematics and drawings will be handed to us on the 26th, and then we'll bring those to you in February to talk about movement forward with that project, which will be the east side.
On Denver and Tinsper, do we have that easement? Is that existing, or would that have to be acquired?
We got the easement on the south side of Tinsper. We do not have the easement on the north side of Denver. We've still got to get the easements on the east side of seventy-one as well.
Some of these, some of these roads that are within the city limits or roads that we may improve in some back, I would like that when we get to easement, go ahead and have it full of this. The easement, we're winding the road and adding sidewalk. Let's just get it all together. Or when y'all acquire an easement, is it only for sewer and water?
We typically only acquire for sewer and water, but would you change that strategy?
Seattle, I would like to go ahead and acquire that so that the street could be widened, so a sidewalk can be added.
Okay.
So drainage could be improved. If we're going ahead and pissing them off and paying them for easement, let's just do it all at one time.
That's fair enough. So as an example, on the east side of seventy-one, that Saddle Road, correct? Saddle Drive, we'd want to obtain the easements for potentially expanding and then guttering that sidewalk, that street.
Drainage, sidewalk, alternative transportation plan.
Okay.
All of it. That way we're not going back to dealing with the same guys three or four years later.
All right, so we just give a summary on that?
Well, I don't know. Administration. That gets a lot of the administration. He's right here.
Okay. We did that.
I don't know if that is something that there's, you know, require extra money. To me, it just seems like you would be, you're just adding it to the easement, and they would probably take what they took, whatever.
Don't pay them more for it.
Yeah, I don't know. If there's an additional cost, you know, then maybe the city would bury that in other water and sewer if you could figure that in. And I don't know if there really would. It'd just be a matter of adding it to it.
What's your typical easement?
It's 25 feet, isn't it?
From?
Yes, 20 to 25 feet.
From center?
No, just from wherever it is. It's usually, they go anywhere from 15 to 25 feet, and it's wherever the sewer goes. It's not necessarily near the road all the time.
So you're talking about if the line's laying 20 foot from the sidewalk?
Well, there's no line in these particular cases, so we would go from the center of the high, from the center-
No existing line. You're going to go from the center of the road?
Yeah. You'd have to.
And it's what, 20?
25.
Okay.
Which should be, should be handled.
I don't know, but I would like, what's the lifespan of the line you're going to lay on maybe Denver or Tinsper? Fifty years? Hundred years?
Fifty to a hundred years.
So you've got to ask yourself, in the 50 to 100 years, will those streets be widened? Will sidewalks be added? I would like for that to be, whatever water sewer line pushed over, so we don't have to re-dig it up in 10 years and move it over 5 feet.
Right, that's fair enough. We do that. I'll get with, I'll get with the mayor. He's probably going to have to deal with streets and try to figure out-
We'll pull everybody together.
Easements, they would be, we can request those easements.
We will know exactly what he wants for a second. He would need the sidewalk widened.
And even a gas would be better than no gas at all.
I'm agreeing with you, Mr. Powell. All right, so this was at the future. That's what the ordinance was written for. Again, phase one is just a snapshot of that.
You can now attach this to-
Which is on its third reading.
Correct.
I make a motion. We place this ordinance for its third reading by title.
Second.
A motion in the second.
Tenary?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
McDaniel?
Yes.
Tenary?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
No one is recreating costs expended on the extension of water and sewer line along Marshall corridor along College Avenue South, as depicted on the attached document.
Make a motion to adopt it. We need to do that.
I think we need to move on.
Now, we don't have an emergency clause.
It's adopted because there's three.
Yes.
Yeah. You have your voices in the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
License, please.
Yes, sir.
It's been very beneficial. Everybody needs to say yes. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next item on the agenda is Police Department Resolution to amend uniform personnel policy for vacation day or on tour.
Actually, I want to ask the paperwork on that. I don't want to cut things and not just leave it wide open to wear them.
Well, you've done so along these lines here recently. I need to kind of modify these a little bit.
This one actually has to do with the last. But next one, I'll have some.
Beautiful.
We like that.
Uh, next item is adoption of 2019 City Council meeting calendar. You have that calendar in your pockets. Talking to Mr. Derry earlier today about trying to, it's tough kind of as you're looking at your head as far as this room and as far as utilizing.
I'm sorry. I'm supposed to have a above table, aren't we?
Oh, are we?
Yeah. I make a motion.
I made a motion, please.
Motion second.
Wait, can I do that?
I did. TP felt deep.
Okay.
I was the table of the chief of police.
Resolution?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
McDaniel?
Yes.
Tenary?
Yes. Lister?
Title it for the holidays?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you. 2019 council calendar you have in your pocket, as always, it's there in front of you. We're looking at it. I think it might look good. If you run your sections a little later on, we might have to come back and adjust a little bit to do something.
I added the holidays down there.
Very good.
It's not to have a big deal, can you?
Right, right, absolutely.
Well, we mainly do this time for the public. Set it up on our calendar all the time.
What's the deal with September 6th, Labor Day and the first Monday?
What is it?
September 6th, Labor Day, the first one?
Make a motion. We adopt the calendar. Motion second to adopt the calendar.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
McDaniel?
Yes.
Tenary? Yes.
McDaniel?
Thank you. Next item is Resolution adopted 2019 proceeding.
Wait, second, please.
Sir.
We put it down there just in case the halls make a national change of opinion.
That's the issue.
Then we move that January 6th, 2020 over to the seventh.
That's very possible.
No, I have to pause again.
All right, Resolution adopted 2019 proceeding.
I made a slight tiny little change because I noticed on there that forever, that the procedural rules were just ruled officials. They're in section one, decided like that, K, something or other, but I've updated it since then. It's the latest, latest edition. I don't think we feel that that is, that's a logic. I'm rooting for that.
Thoughts of things being different, anyone?
I like the random calls on the other side of the table that I do like.
Well, you know, that's not even in here. There isn't the rule call in here at all.
Takes the pressure off AC.
And I, I don't think we have anything governing. I researched, and there's nothing that says you got to do it. I'll learn that, or how you do it.
I noticed section 5A8. It says, "City one, those with agenda items to be added at need shall provide nine copies of the ordinance or resolutions." Which is what?
If they have something that they're bringing, they, they should, yes. I mean, that's how many copies are needed for six, seven, eight, nine.
But we make people-
I have to make them usually, but they do come and ask me how many copies I need.
That's bold nine.
Let's just send there to show how many of documents, copies of documents, if it's a special document, they did send. Bound documents of sorts.
Where do you get copies? Could only though the agenda item or the city department is.
I, I don't know if this is where I need to put it, or maybe just me getting it done. Make sure the finance department receives some of the stuff that comes up here to, obviously, not even nine and a half percent, if not more, concerns money within the city.
I'll just give you a copy of the packet at times.
Right, right.
I need to be voiceless.
Yeah, so anything that's in back. I don't know if that-
I didn't have it. It's like, yeah, I did have it.
So is that going to be written in here?
I, I don't know. I think maybe just- Wouldn't say that. Obviously, you said ten copies there. Uh, we can say ten. I just, I wouldn't mind saying specifically to, to the finance department. Or for it.
Well, this is- I don't believe the agenda. This is agenda items.
So what can we do to protect the contract there?
This is not reports and things. This is agenda items for the actual agenda on the-
No, I was just talking about proceeding, okay?
So what that is.
That's a public reminder to myself, basically.
The out would be like forty, I think.
Number nine says, "In the event of a holiday following on Monday, the above schedule will be shifted to the last few words today." I heard about that. The above item is nine copies being brought to us. All right.
The above schedule.
Where's the scheduling? That's my point.
Well, everything like there. Have to work.
So I can motion second?
Yeah. I make a motion to adopt.
Second.
Motion second to adopt. I'm sorry, we can continue.
I agree. This was above schedule.
Yeah.
Exhibit A.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Good.
Yes.
Uh, we have scratched number seven on your original agenda budget. We are now to declare vacancy on council. I have a letter here that's due the opening, or we opened. Let me read the letter. "To the Honorable City Council, agreement with please accept my resignation to City Council from Ward Three, Position Two, with two years remaining on my term. Consider my resignation effective midnight 12:30, 1:18. Sincerely, Lee Johnson."
Make a motion. We declare a vacancy for Ward Three, Position Two.
Second.
Second.
And a motion, three seconds. I'm not sure who was first.
So this was an on, you just did that on this context?
No, I didn't.
Oh, okay, that does, does only matter when you contact us. Okay, so Rod, make a motion?
Yes.
Tim?
Basically.
Are I seeing? To declare vacancy for-
Position two.
Ward Three, Position Two.
Ward Three, Position Two. Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Yes.
Tenary?
Yes. Yes.
And for the public's knowledge, according to municipal league or statute, we will, we have declared a vacancy in our next scheduled meeting. Council will decide on that vacancy, and that obviously will be in February. Hey.
I'll put that item on the next exhibit.
Yes, please, yes, ma'am. Uh, last item on the agenda, I believe, I got all of the spurs around, is the discussion of citywide health insurance. We scratched it. Yeah, that was, that is very- Finance department asked for that to be known.
That is nearly, that's a 2018 budget, not a 2019, if you notice there. And that gave me the ability or authority, and it will give me the ability or authority on your line item budget to clean it up. That's all that is saying for you to do. Take available funds that are in the bottom line of each of the departments and go spread it amongst those that went over budget on a line item. But we'll discuss that at the same time that we do the budget for 2019. We'll just incorporate it in the budget.
Which, not on agenda, but I'm going to suggest it, I guess I'll just suggest it now that we have one more study session, special call meeting to wrap up the budget.
At? In the group.
Sir, in the group, yes, yeah. Now, let down now.
I love it.
Are you saying that? It has to be the group, doesn't it?
Yeah.
Well, this is a study session.
Special call meeting.
You wanted to do-
We would have a study session in- We would have a study session and then a special call meeting immediately.
Do it all together.
Yep, yep.
You don't want to have opportunity to change this, so it's not good.
You don't want a special call meeting, because you may have discussion in there anyway.
Well, yeah, I guess. Special call meeting, period.
What are the chances that we change? Would be like, let's change.
It depends on this discussion right down to insurance, I guess.
Well, we know we had a scheduled meeting.
Yes.
We're all there, but there were just some very minor changes, we both thought. If it was pretty extensive, we'd say, let's schedule special call meeting two days later.
Also, I don't think it's on the study session.
Pretty small, we understand it.
A special call meeting is recorded and minutes are done on them, the study sessions are not, so it'd be best to just call it special call meeting or take care of all of it.
Yeah.
Grab it all in. calendars.
Next week is probably, I guess, is best way.
Week after that is. Next week, that's right, sixteen. What about this week? Again, ten months your schedule for.
I would land any day of Sunday.
Uh, what are these, only day of this week that I could possibly be there?
One.
Wednesday night, tonight, I'd say Wednesday night.
That for personally, I can't not be there any other time.
Six thirty?
Yeah.
What about the fourteenth, does that work? That's a next one.
Monday.
Monday.
What's, what's meeting there, you can't do Wednesday?
I could do with, yeah, we just have the same, but then.
Oh, to get a little more time.
Just, yeah, give him more time, it's the fourteenth. The fourteenth, I can do.
No, actually, I don't have it down.
So you're planning, planning metal Tuesday?
It's on the.
I don't think metal might be. Do you need more time than Wednesday?
I don't. I can present it.
Why don't we shoot for Wednesday, six, six thirty?
January nine. Six thirty.
Okay, Wednesday night, tonight, six thirty, it is. Okay, so, discussion of the health insurance. Uh, I take absolute full responsibility for oversight on not notifying employees of, uh, open enrollment. Therefore caused some issues with eight, ten, thirteen employees. Uh, we have, we have a mechanism in place already, I worked with this year, but we have that mechanism in place to make sure that does not happen next year for sure. But it is what it is, we missed it, and those employees know that opportunity to, to change or, or do anything different. We believe we have a, an option to take care of those employees, which is obviously important, and I think, I mean, it is important to take care of employees, so we think we have a pretty good option. We want to present it to you tonight, see what's better, and I will turn that over to Tom to give us specifics.
What basically happened was a comedy of, you know, a bunch of things that's kind of snowballed. One, they didn't get notification of an open enrollment. Um, two, they were not told what their rate increases were going to be until they hit them on their check or a day before the check. That was in January, by the time they had the time to react, they, in making any financial decisions with shifting a spouse to another insurance company. Uh, they were already outside of their open enrollment period with their spouse, so that caused an issue that we kind of locked them into as a result of not communicating effectively with what was happening with the insurance. Now, everybody knew, I've been discussing with you, that we were budgeting a worst case scenario, but that information regarding the specifics and what those rates were going to be to the individual employee was not communicated effectively. So there was a little bit of a, of a harm to them as a result of this, so what I proposed was that for the year two thousand nineteen and nineteen only, not going forward ever, ever, never. You, um, look at the rate that we had as a premium for two thousand eighteen, and you take the difference between the rate of two thousand nineteen and the city incur that cost. That cost to thirteen people affecting seven departments would be seventeen thousand nine hundred dollars, or eighteen thousand for the year. Now that gives them, however, one year, and anytime that their spouse would come into their open enrollment, because for some spouses it varies throughout the year. It gives them ample time to do planning, and then possibly to drop the coverage for the spouse at that time, or the dependent at that time, and seek additional insurance. You can do that anytime throughout the year when their spouses come up for potentially jumping on a, a different insurance policy. So that's seventeen nine is the worst case scenario for the budget as far as the budget is concerned. It's really absorbable as far as the budget is concerned, the budget that's currently, uh, in place. Uh, I think it's the, probably the best thing to do, it can be mitigated, you can probably make that budget neutral by looking at some of the things that are going on within certain departments' budgets. Um, but I think it's probably the best thing to do in order to make the employee whole as a result of a lack of communication. And like I said, this is designed and intended to be only one year, not, not to exceed this year.
Are we going to require the employees, if their spouses are able to build elsewhere, do they have to, or I don't care, I just wonder.
No, after this year, when whatever the premium is in two thousand twenty, that's what they're going, they, they make that decision solely on effective communication within thirty days of the, you know, open enrollment period, they're going to know what those rates are. So they can make a decision at that time, they have the ability to have effective planning, and now they did. We caused sudden employees to make some radical decisions regarding coverage, once we heard that was going on, we stopped that because we didn't want people going without insurance as a result of not being able to afford, afford, you know. Additional premium coverage when they had no opportunity to make, you know, changes or plans.
Do we have that in our policy, though, that if a spouse has available full coverage, they have to take it, or not, as a city? We, we would do some of this, I don't know, I don't remember here.
And this is the plan, I mean, when I'm talking to the planner, this is the plan that the council recommended in the back, which we proposed, and you got some.
The plan of option two.
Yeah.
Twenty eight point five.
Twenty eight.
Any motion there?
Yes.
I make motion.
Second.
Make motion with what?
We, you know what?
I think I want it is to cover, because, I mean, it is a bad deal, we just.
Appreciate that, we have motion second.
Ten second.
Yes, I.
Hi, Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Very good, thank you gentlemen. Um, I believe, unless I missed one, that is all the items on the agenda added or not added, so we are going to have department reports and question from council. I think we got at least three departments on the street, and the planning by our, where's your, our department heads.
Planning.
Planning is not here.
I got a question.
I, I gave him your question today at the department that meeting, but we delayed our department that meeting after noon until two o'clock, you know, part of which part of the meeting. And I proposed that question to Sunny, and he said, I'll get back to you. I, I really didn't know he wasn't here tonight, so.
So the rest of the council knows what, discussed with the mayor. I requested that on the project on Ware Road, I wanted to see a copy of the bond, particularly I wanted a copy put in front of the city attorney. And I'm doing this because we've been in trouble on the last edition that was done, there was no bond. Well, there was one, but it wasn't worth it, there was one, it wasn't worth anything, God went broke, and, uh, we kind of got stuck. So I asked that, I wanted to see the bond, now this is not something I think we typically should do, I think we should have full trust in administration, that you go through the procedures. But because of our past, I want to see the bond, and I particularly want stuff right in front of the city attorney, too, through the administration, so. That's a, it's a pretty good administration, but everybody was. But I still think that we still have full trust that you actually go through all the stuff that we should be going through and we're covered, I want to make sure these citizens are covered. And we're not paying for a mess if something goes wrong.
We'll follow it again in the morning, first thing in the morning.
So, so next council meeting, I want to see nine copies, bold and nine, ten copies, or bold and, and black, ten?
No, we're adding.
Or you want me to change that together?
No, no, it's just for council, of course, so.
That's right.
Not that well.
Yes, we'll follow up on that for sure. Anything else?
I see the silhouettes up there, the blood hole along Denver Street.
Two, two planning issues for sure.
I mean, I, and I've only missed that one Sunday for about three months.
I'm under the impression they were there, looked today. I don't, I don't think they were long to travel. You see him there? That's what. Any other? I'm leaning on your little. Uh, anything else from any of these department heads that are here? Come on, you got the, somebody. Good, okay.
How about Nathan?
How about Nathan?
You see everything, everything looking good, I'm delighted, I guess.
Yeah, it's, uh, we're still waiting on the lights, that's, that's the last part, a little bit of trail, you know.
So what, future, what's next project?
Uh, we're promoting on phase two, uh, at Bell Park, finish the, that'll be the next one we can put out.
Is, is something in the year two thousand nineteen here?
Yep, it's, it's in the.
Dever Grant, right?
Yep. It's a, we're going to do an east connector.
And I hadn't asked, I'm assuming you're using what's, what was already designed by Mr. No.
Promenade.
Yeah, the.
Yeah, it was.
Little Rock, can't remember his name now.
Yeah, and Bon Callas.
Bon Callas. Same, you're just following.
We, we had a little bit of kind of red, ready to go through on that because just some of stuff didn't meet their specs or that we were wanting to do, so we got that cleaned up. And we're afraid to get this going out to late, and so that was kind of our next problem, where you could test that one behind and then. Then we're looking at, you know, flexibility of a connector to the east side of, all the way through from city hall, basically, city hall out there, so we'll find for that.
I'll notice this question for the chair or you, but when we'll just go up and bid.
We, we're, we're shooting for late February, early March.
Always quiet.
So like, as soon as that finishes up out there, we'll have another one, I'll keep, keep some momentum.
I, I think it looks good.
Wait, thank you. Anything else? I was wondering, if Dennis could, uh, address the West Denver situation. Anything else for this, is anything that needs to be money allocated for, anything out there?
What's that?
On West Denver, you're saying?
On West.
Pardon me?
On West Seaguard.
On West Denver.
Okay, Overlake.
Well, yeah, you know, I guess that's it, we were talking about that. All out there, wherever, I see here, you said, you know, there's, the road is falling and water running underneath.
That's, that's your dish wincing.
Okay, you're talking about the, the hole across from the church. Yeah. I thought you meant Denver, Overlake, that's right.
Yeah. Now, what we're going to do, that has failed, we're basically going to ground one, run it underneath, we're going to have to bring that up, dig it back out, fill it with concrete. Probably going to be closed from eight o'clock at B till next morning, for the concrete here.
And you talked to school or?
I got in school, sent it by an email, flyer, police, the mayor, the legislature, that's what they put it in paper. That was your main.
Yes.
I was thinking about Overlake, I just think they can hear that, right?
Correct, they'll put it out, the bidding, I believe it was the sixteenth. We're going to go broad open, the sidewalk on the fifteenth. Yeah, they'll be letting bid on the sixteenth for the Overlake on Denver Street. And we are, just like the project they did, of course, on, on Iowa, on this paint street, they did it, we're very watching, that's it. Now, we, we will be, we budgeted, I think, eighty thousand dollars for that project, because the grant was for two hundred fifty thousand dollars, and the estimated cost of that is three, whatever, forty something. So we budgeted another, I think we budgeted about twenty thousand more than what they were actually saying that would extra, could be, just in case. We'll be pitching in about seventy eight thousand dollars to get that whole street over there, they, they'll do the, the bidding, and I, as I stated before, I just make one request that we consider not, except when you want to trade them. That's, all that was, was a request, they do what they want to. And that's the sixteenth on the fifteenth, Dennis and Sunny and I are going to R dot in Little Rock to discuss the, uh, beginning process of sidewalk on Tinsburg, that two, three hundred ninety four thousand dollar grant. We all over.
What is that, your goal, sorry?
Fifteenth. Yep, we go down there for the meeting to get our information and what we start to process, or then that can get started pretty quick. Continue to see people walk on Tinsburg, it's just dangerous, now, once we get built, we can't make them walk on it, but hopefully go. It's a pretty big deal. And what questions for department heads, council forum?
Well, one of the many heads I wear up the booty book president for basketball here in Greenwood, and I want to thank the city for, uh, volunteering to work the section stands this Friday night. And the police department for next Friday night, so appreciate that.
Tammy and I are going to be there on Friday night, I hope we're still, take up one more volunteer if you're going to. Watch me eat all the lunch, no, that's not what it's.
I might be.
Okay, it's fun, we had a good time.
One of them ready, why don't you go to the other, other sessions?
Somebody said to me today, our afternoon meeting with the department, it's one of the, I believe it was Nathan said, isn't that Jake Floyd?
We have Jake Floyd, for sure.
You noted that pretty quick.
There's some extra, we'll teach them, help us not do it.
I'll go ahead and help him.
You'll be there, you'll be there, help us clean up, right?
You got it, man.
Alright. Uh, I think we got our budget study session scheduled. Anything else from the council? I'm sorry, special call meeting, sorry, I keep calling the best, sorry, special call meeting. Anything else? Anything from the audience, we've got to get grabbed tonight, and wow, we stayed the whole time.
It's over early.
I know, and I was, by the way, I'd like some sort of kudos, I, we're off the clock, it's going to be better, you put that. We have a bunch of jerks. Your jerk, thank you. Your adjourn, thank you.